Yeah, I'm in, but I'm, I'm, I'm on my phone. I'll try and get the computer hookup.
Are we, are we waiting for somebody? Jen?
We're waiting for Trent and for Hannah.
I'm in, but I'm, I'm, I'm on my phone. I'll try and get the computer hookup.
Are we, are we waiting for somebody? Jen?
We're waiting for Trent and for Hannah.
I'm in, but I'm, I'm, I'm on my phone. I'll try and get the computer hookup.
Steve, you might have to mute yourself as you with the YouTube.
Can I close out of YouTube?
Are we waiting for somebody? Jen?
We're waiting for Trent and.
Let's just let that play all night.
Oh, I see. I was like, are we living in an alternate universe? What's happening?
Parallel universes.
It's the recording of the recording of the recording. It's kind of like being fun house.
You look in the mirror and the mirror and the mirror.
Let's just let that play all night. So going on.
So I closed my YouTube link. That shut YouTube down. Jen, can you tell if we're still recording?
Says it is.
Good, right?
Says we're live and it's recording.
Yeah.
Hey, guys.
Yeah, just, just, just. I've it. And yeah.
Okay. Um, so you're ready, Marco. I'll make you co-host and off we go.
Sounds good.
There you go.
And there we are. Okay, great. Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. It is six oh one. I called to order the City Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It is November seventeen, two thousand and twenty. This is our regular meeting for September. And would you please take a roll call, Steve?
Yep, Commissioner Shaver.
Here.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Here.
Commissioner Grosscup.
Here.
Commissioner Dane.
Here.
Commissioner Schacter. We'll come back.
He should, and I hope.
I still see him. We'll come back to him. Commissioner Whissing.
Here.
We'll just, we'll just call Commissioner Schacter in a minute. One seat. There he is.
Commissioner Schacter's here.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. I call that complete. Um, let's see, tonight's webinar ID is eight one zero five zero nine six, six zero zero four. If you'd like to log in to the Zoom meeting, also a good phone number. If you can't do it via the computer is one, two, five, three, two, one, five, eight, seven, eight, two. And I think that was it for the meeting attendance instructions. Uh, moving on to item number three, tonight we see that the minutes, we have two sets of minutes to receive. Uh, entertaining a motion in minutes from October twenty seven, two thousand and twenty.
I move to accept the minute minutes of October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty meeting.
Thank you.
I would second.
Motion to second. Thank you, Carolyn. Um, any discussion on the minutes from October twenty seven? I think that was our regular meeting for the month. Now I see no discussion. I'll call for the questions to receive those minutes.
Commissioner Whissing. Commissioner Whissing.
I think I abstained, right? Because I wasn't at either meeting. And sorry, you both were frozen. I was gonna send you guys up a flagship. So I abstained, don't I, Anna?
Okay.
You can, yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dane.
Yes.
Commissioner Grosscup.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. Moving on to the minutes from November nine, two thousand and twenty, entertaining a motion to receive those.
So moved.
Motion received.
And second.
And a second. Any discussion on the November ninth minutes? No, see none. Excellent. We'll call for the question to receive those minutes.
Uh, Commissioner Grosscup.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Upstate.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dane.
Yes.
Commissioner Whissing.
Thanks.
Motion passive.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. Thanks, everybody. Uh, moving on to item number four on the agenda is comments from citizens that are appearing. Um, front of the commission for items that are not on the agenda. And if you are here to voice your comments or concerns, please raise your hand. And I see none, so we'll move on. We'll close that item for tonight, then we'll move into. Uh, item number five, which is our new items for tonight, our planning items for tonight. And we're gonna start out with planning item forty nine twenty, which is a consideration of allocation and extent review application. For the construction of a city electric and broadband operations center building. And I would imagine that's why Matt's here. Hey, Matt.
How's it going? Um, good evening, Chairman and planning and zoning commissioners, Trent Hyatt with Community Development. I think we will want to promote a couple other folks, Mr. Chairman, that would be Rich Carter and Rick Barth. Looks like you already promoted Doug.
And Trent.
Missing any of the other folks there, but I'm going to now share my screen with you. If you'll let me know once you see that. Coming up on your end? All right, thank you. Well, as you introduced it, Marco, uh, this is a location extent review for the Sea of Glenwood Springs Electric and Broadband Operations Building. The site in question is a three acre parcel along Deveraux Road that is Zond River Industrial. Uh, you see there at the bottom of the slide is a picture of the site from Deveraux Road looking southwest. And it's currently vacant. And the city proposes a fifteen thousand square foot, two-story building to house our electric department, their equipment, as well as vehicle storage. Uh, our broadband department, office space, meeting space and equipment storage, as well as at the western end of the site, you'll see. There are some improvements that are proposed for future boat parking for trailers. Not gonna speak too much about that tonight because it's really kind of more just a potential option for the future. As you may or may not know, there is a existing boat ramp for whitewater rafting. That is on Deveraux Road to the west, about a thousand feet from the end of the west end of this lot, um, that is on city property. The city also owns a lot of property along the river there, and there's been conversations in the past about potential, um, you know, future boat ramps there. But again, that was just more or less just to see, you know, what grading would be involved and, and how many spaces could be accommodated there. So no budget or, or monies are available for that construction now, and I'm not sure if that's actually gonna happen in the future. Section seventy sixty fifty D three E point three outline the review criteria for location extent review. And as per state statute, all location extent reviews are mainly focused on one thing, and that's consistency with any governing bodies comprehensive plan. Uh, as you see in the map there on the right, um, this parcel is designated industrial by the city, certainly accommodate the use proposed. Um, and this also seems to, um, address numerous community goals and various objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan, such as encouraging sustainable economic development. Maintaining the city as a regional center of Garfield County, um, promoting infill development as well as promoting social diversity. Two, um, consistency with the general purpose and intent of the code, um, one of those being health, safety and welfare, as well as orderly, efficient development, regulating the use of land based on impacts and non standards for design. Three, um, being minimizing adverse impacts. There are no non, um, significant geologic hazards at this site, other than the typical hydrocompactive soils that we dealt with throughout the city. But that's outlined in their geotechnical report, and they would have to incorporate that into any foundation design moving forward. I did want to talk a little bit about our general development considerations that were incorporated into this project. You know, we're, we're processing it as a location extent review, but, um, early on, um, there's always been the intent by the city, the electric department and Mr. Langhorse to meet all city standards, um, that we could. Such as common open space and landscaping, the open space requirement for this industrials on district is five percent. But you'll see much more of the site is provided as open space, um, as well as amenities provided there. And, um, and landscaping requirements for this on district are a minimum of ten percent of the site. They are proposing approximately twenty-five percent. If you look closely at the landscaping plan, you'll see significant tree plantings as well as interior parking lot plantings that are being proposed. A lot of thoughts gone in there. Additionally, a lot of thought has gone into the design of this building. Rich Carter, who's on the phone, spent, uh, or on the call, spent a lot of time with staff before they even submitted an application. Uh, as well as with Mr. Pratt, uh, for understanding the applicable non-residential design standards for the city and wanting to incorporate numerous design options. Uh, we even had, uh, conversations about, um, specific colors for this building at one point where we wanted to make sure we brought in some female eyes who can see hues of color better. To help us out with what we thought. We came up with what we thought was a very nice, uh, template of colors that you see on the front elevation there at the right. But this building also incorporates numerous design architectural elements, um, every thirty feet, um, including on the front facade as required, thirty percent glazing. You'll see that the, the doors for the windows, um, for the, the vehicles, actually, a lot of that is, is glazing there. As well as variations in materials and colors, um, you'll see projections, um, and recessions on the front facades and a very nice awning along the middle of the building at the second level. And as well as, uh, changes in roof height, um, you know, it is a shed roof that changes consistently across, uh, the, the roof line. But it also incorporates solar panels along the top to break up that. We didn't receive too many comments on this, um, that's probably due to the significant amount of time that, that staff put into it before, um, the official submittal. Uh, we did receive some general comments from engineering departments, uh, which I think have already been addressed by the applicant, but to be, um, reviewed and analyzed further by the, the engineering department. But you know, typical things that we receive on these. Section seventy sixty thirty G one D allows you to approve, approve of conditions, deny or continue this application. Staff recommends approval of action item one, and you'll see findings and conditions on page six of the stack report. And, uh, I am happy to answer any questions, but of course we've got, uh, our public works director, Matt here, as well as, uh, the design consultants to help with those questions as well.
Hey, thank you. Uh, thank you, Trent. Um, back to the commission, unless, uh, the design team wants to add something to that, or Matt, anybody?
We, we have a short presentation. It's a few slides. If you guys would bear with us and kind of flip through it.
It's fine.
Okay, let me, uh, pop this up on the screen here. See if I can do this right. Can everybody see a, a screen with the, uh, an aerial background and some parcels on it? Perfect. All right, um, first thing I want to state is, you know, the, the electric department obviously is homeless at this point. Um, we had to sell the M O C. I think it's actually torn down. I think Raft has proceeded with that already. Um, so they're in a rental location that's a little small for them, and they're basically storing equipment and materials kind of everywhere. Um, can everybody hear me? Okay? Okay, so I'll make sure. Um, so what the intent was even back in twenty twelve, I believe, when this parcel was actually purchased from the Hot Springs Pool. Um, was to build an electric operations center on this site. Um, that was moving them kind of away from the M O C, giving the, the departments in the M O C some more space. Um, and putting the electric department on this facility. As you can see on this kind of oversight map, you know, this is Deveraux Road. Uh, hopefully you can see my hand on this thing, um, right adjacent to the yellow parcel. This is sixteen sixty Deveraux Road where the, uh, E O C would be going. Right adjacent to it is our Mitchell Creek substation. Um, this is a great place for the E O C. Uh, it's an industrial, it's adjacent to one of our substations. It's right down the road from our new fleet department, uh, which you guys have seen before, a two, 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 two Deveraux Road. Uh, so we felt like location wise, this was an actual great location for this. Uh, we've already invested, I believe it was one point two five million dollars in buying the piece of property, uh, back in twenty twelve. Um, there was an original design done in twenty fourteen, um, which incorporated two different buildings, one for broadband, one for electric. Um, we didn't feel like they incorporated cost-saving, uh, ideas into that design, so we kind of trashed all of that and started over. And I want to thank S G M, um, Rich in Newman, over at Newman Construction, uh, and Doug Pratt for helping with this process. Because we've tried to find an effective way to design into this particular site with the complications that it does have. It is very skinny. Um, it's not very, very far from the, the front of the lot to the back of the lot. There is a pretty significant grade change from the front of the lot to the back of the lot. Um, the original design had a building actually sitting right on the roadway where our building is, and then a second one sitting right on the roadway where, um, this parking area is. And constructed a fairly significant soil nail wall along the back of the property. We feel like we're using the property better. Um, as Trent mentioned, you know, some of the council members suggested that maybe we look at some kind of additional boat ramp parking. What are we gonna do with the west half of this property? Because we don't really need it for this particular building. Um, so we've put some designs together, spent a little bit of money so that we can kind of answer those questions. Right now financially, um, it's not feasible for us to build along with this building, but it's a good planning piece. Um, for council to kind of take a look at. Um, secondarily, obviously, the east half of the property is where the building would go. Did the sheet, sheet flip when I flipped it? Are you looking at a different sheet now? Just got a landscaping plan on it, couple of trees.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. And Doug, you jump in anytime you want to.
No, you're doing great.
We looked at the code. Um, we're trying to abide by the code as much as humanly possible, obviously, uh, as Trent mentioned. You know, we're allowed parking adjacent to it. Uh, there'll be no parking in front of it. Um, so basically we'll pull in off of Deveraux. We have good sight lines in both directions at this entrance location. Um, pull in, there'll be some visitor parking, some employee parking outside. Pull in and be able to enter the building itself. Most of our equipment needs to be stored inside. Um, then we like to keep our three hundred thousand dollar crane indoors as much as humanly possible and a bunch of the other equipment. So, um, it made sense to not park out front, but to create enough parking interior. Um, it's kind of a confusing drawing, but you can see the topography across the site. This is where the building is going to sit up in this upper right-hand corner. You can see the grade differential. So basically what Doug and the team have decided to do, and it's a great idea, is instead of building a soil nail wall and have to build a foundation for a building. Let's integrate the two of them together. So this building is actually built into the hillside. The second story where broadband will be housed actually as a walkout in the back, and they have the ability to walk the sidewalk around the back side of this building. Um, electric is in the lower level, which is basically just a couple of feet above roadway grade. Let's see here, another page. Uh, kind of a blow up, um, landscaping, meeting landscape requirements. Uh, I really want to get to this one. Here we go. So you guys probably saw this. It's in the packet. It's the floor plan. Um, the original building, if you had seen those plans before, was very joggy, lots of corners, twenty feet wide here, thirty here, forty there, back to twenty. Um, anybody who knows construction knows the simplest way to build something is to build a box, but it doesn't mean we can't build a pretty box, uh, aesthetically speaking. Interior wise, we actually end up with more square footage than we did in the original building. Um, we are able to park basically everything that we need, these, uh, shaded boxes or vehicles, cranes, auger trucks, bucket trucks, those kinds of things. Everything is be able to park inside, and we have a significant amount of space internally still for storage of meters and everything that we use on a daily basis that needs to be stored inside. So really, the only place that the staff will be is the small little middle pod in here, where we've got meter, uh, tech offices, few internal offices, lunchrooms. Um, it's hard to see here. This is called a server room. Uh, we've actually been working with I T and broadband. Um, this room is not just a server room for this building, is also an emergency disaster server room for the entire city. Uh, so we'll be running fiber optic to this building, a pretty big trunk line. Um, and if the city, let's just say worst case scenario, if City Hall ever burns down. All of our information that's in this building would be backed up in this location, and instead of being down for weeks, we could be down for just hours. Um, and have everything back up and running and do a continuation process for the government, so for, for government operations. So we're using this building in multiple ways. Broadband is here, electric will be here, and we'll have a continuation process for a server room, um, within this building also. Um, upstairs, this is the lower portion up here. Obviously, these two sides are just upper levels for the bays down below, but this is broadband. Um, staircase is coming from downstairs upstairs. Um, we'll have two offices, some cubbies, uh, kind of a conference room here. And basically what this leaves us with is this large area out here for either. Housing people in an emergency situation, um, expansion of broadband, uh, more use and storage internal. But I guess my whole point is we have maximized the square footage of this building with a minimum footprint, uh, to be as effective as humanly possible and as cost-effective as possible. Um, Trent had some of the pretty colored elevations up. I'll, I'll bring those up here in a minute, but I wanted to show you the, the front, the rear and the side views of this building. As it, as Trent stated, you know, we've, we've added glass to all the doors to meet the glazing requirements. We've added shed roofs, uh, for the one, I think it's two feet and thirty feet or something like that requirement. We are gonna put solar panels on the top of this, uh, building. Um, it's an electric building. We might as well have some solar associated with it. We'll do our twenty-five, uh, kilowatts that we're allowed to do within our code. Um, multiple roof lines, multiple, multiple face undulations. Um, we, we're doing what we said we were gonna do. We're, we are making this as, uh, code compliant and as beautiful a building as humanly possible. Even in the back where it doesn't face anything but the railroad, uh, we're adding it, uh, aesthetics to that. Uh, going into the, the, the pretty elevations. Thanks, Rich. I appreciate these are, these are wonderful. We think we have, we have a really nice building. Looks, efficiencies, cost effectiveness. Uh, we are doing everything we can to make this building go this time. Um, projected costs, last go around in twenty fourteen was between the two billions and the site was over eight million dollars. Um, we're looking at about three right now with preliminary cost estimates. Um, so we've significantly cut the cost down, uh, for this site to make it feasible for the electric department. I don't know how much you guys want me to ramble on. I know this is the. Um. Know this is kind of the, the big thing for the night, I believe, but, uh, do you guys have any questions? Do you want to engage Rich or Doug or any of the S G M team on questions for the site? Um, that's kind of the overview of what we're doing. Uh, basically, it's gonna be an architectural metal building. There'll be some stucco. There'll be some metal roofing. Uh, it'd be a nice mix of materials, uh, for the site.
Excellent. Thank you, Matt. Uh, very informative. Um. Yeah, let's just do questions. Let's bring it back to the commission, and, uh, anybody has a questions, do questions to staff or the design team, please raise your hand. And we'll, uh, we'll do what we always do. First up goes first, and we'll start with, uh, Commissioner Schacter, please.
Thank you. Um, Matt, question, uh, are there gonna be, um? E V, um, hookups planned on this site?
So yes, Newman has them in the cost estimate as a T B D, but yeah, we're looking at at least, um, running some E V hookups to the external parking stalls adjacent to the building. Maybe one double or two doubles over there. Um, we'll set the site up so that if we want to add to that, that we can do that quite easily. Um, and then internal building wise, we'll make sure we size the transformer appropriately, that if we start changing vehicles that are parking in the building to E V, that we'll be able to charge them. So yes, that is a consideration for the site.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? And we got Commissioner Sipperly, please.
Thanks. Um, first I would like to say that this is a very good-looking building, and it's such a relief to not just have, um, like a warehouse being put over here. It is gonna be able to be seen from both sides, and I think this is a building the city can really be proud of, and all the hard work on that shows. Um, so I was only able to find a couple of kind of minor questions, uh, and I'll, I'll just tell them to you now. Uh, my first one was, will there be a fence between the street and the parking lot? And then, uh, a couple other parking questions. One of them, I noticed the zigzag path that accesses broadband. I would assume people are gonna shortcut across there, and just wanted to think maybe there's the, another way to put a path, um, to take the hook out of that, um. Accessible ramp, because people might just shortcut. And also there's kind of some lighter toned parking spots shown right in front of the offices. Is that visitor parking, or do we have our A D A parking over there? Um, so that's it, the fence and the zigzag and the parking out front. Thanks.
Uh, so we do have a couple visitor parkings out front, so you will be able to come here and pay your broadband bill if you want to. Um, they are A D A compliant parking stalls, so that the public, because it is a public building. Um, so yes, there are a couple stalls out front. They're less than the thirty percent that were required. Trent can probably go over that better than me. Um, and Doug could probably go over the zigzag. He put a giant tree in the middle of the zigzag. I think he's trying to use vegetation to keep people from cutting. It is an A D A compliant. You gotta come up, land, come up, land, come up, land kind of thing. Um, so due to the grade differential between the two, uh, levels, obviously, we have to meet A D A, and this was the most kind of cost-effective and grading efficient way to do that. Um, and I think Doug's intent with some of that vegetation was to try to get that pathway cut off there. Um, the fence, you know, we haven't talked about a fence. I hadn't really intended to fence this area off. Um, we were gonna leave it as a nice open building. A lot of the other buildings along here don't have fences in front of them. The Coke building doesn't, the plumbing building doesn't. Um, so I hadn't really intended to kind of make it its own thing, I guess. Um, so I hadn't really intended on a fence, I guess, uh, if anybody else wants to chime in if we need one, um, but I haven't seen any reason for one.
Man, I might just chime in. You know, we've tried to use shrub materials out front that'll help screen, you know, some of the parking, you know, I think the, the building elevation that faces the street is a nice elevation. It's the nicest elevation that we have on the building. So I think trying to screen out some of the parking with shrub materials is kind of the goal versus a screen fence. Um, so, so that was part of the reason for doing that, that planting bed between the street and, uh, um, and the access to the, the building itself gets a little narrow in places. So rather than having street trees all along there, we've substituted some shrub materials in, which I think will help with screening. And then just, just as a side note on the path, there's some really steep grades between the path where those, we have some shrubs planted between the paths. It's gonna be tough to, to cut through those grades to get down that hillside other than taking the path. No doubt, somebody will try, but, um, but, uh, we've tried to do some, use some plant materials on there that would discourage it.
And the, the other thing I didn't mention is that if you are public and you want to come here and you don't want to drive, we are putting in a crosswalk. Um, Deveraux is only required to have a sidewalk on that, uh, north side. Uh, we are gonna put a crosswalk in, and there will be a sidewalk to the landscape island here. To a sidewalk, and you'll be able to get to the front of the building if you want to just have pedestrian access, if somebody wants to walk to work, whatever. So we are hooking it to the pedestrian facilities on Deveraux.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Whissing, please.
I just had a quick question for Trent. Um. One of the criteria, sorry, the social diversity, Trent, can you just kind of describe what that, how that applies to this project?
Yeah, so you know, a lot of those goals that are outlined have been some goals that, that you can utilize to, to meet the intent of that specific goal. And for many of them, you'll see the infill development as a means to promote that, that. And for many of them, you'll see the infill development as a means to promote that, that various goal. And that's how so- social diversity is, is aided by infill development in the city where it's, it's um, easier for folks to access various sites, um, you know, as well as like, you know, it's easier to get to these places by trails, um, transportation, you know, options. So it's not specific to that goal, but it is by way of one of the subgoals, if that makes sense.
Thanks. I just want a clarification on how that exactly would apply to something like this. So that helps me. Thanks.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Uh, any other questions? No, I, I'm, I'm just curious. The, the, the colors we see, I assume are the colors proposed, right? The gray and the red?
Yes.
Love it. Excellent. Um, Commissioner Shacter, please.
Thank you. Just uh, there, I didn't note them. Are there bike wrecks also um, in the plan, Matt?
I am unmuted. Hey, that's good. Um, not as of yet, but we can add one.
I would hope so. Thank you.
No, that's a great idea. I don't think we had to add one on there yet.
All right. Thank you. Uh, any other questions? From the commission. See none. Thank you, guys. Um, open the uh, I'll open the public uh, comments at this time. Please, if you're here to comment on this application for the city, please raise your hand. And we'll get you, we'll get you in. And I see none. I see nobody. So I'll close the public portion for this hearing. And I'll bring it back to the commission. Um, entertaining a motion in planning item forty-nine dash twenty, the uh, location extent, I'm sorry, location and extent review uh, to construct a fifteen thousand square foot building for the city electric and broadband department. And it looks like we have one action and staff is recommending approval of this application.
Mister Chairman, I would like to move uh, that the commission approve item forty-nine dash twenty uh, uh, extents and location review for city electric and broadband with the findings and conditions on page six of the staff report.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve made by Commissioner Zipperly.
I can second it. Thank you.
And a second by Commissioner Grosskopf. Any discussion about the uh, uh, this planning item. Uh, Commissioner Shacter, please.
Thank you. One quick one. Um, and it's not a criticism at all and I, I support this proposal. But I do lament um, just for future planning that the loss of industrial zoning in Glenwood to municipal municipal owned properties is an inherent conflict I see with economic development future. So perhaps we have to look at additional industrial opportunities for Glenwood if that's one way we wanna grow. That's my only observation, but I'm in full support of this proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner Shacter. Good point. Uh, any more discussion? Now, if I see none, now I'll call for the question.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Zipperly?
Yes.
Commissioner Grosskopf?
Yes.
Commissioner Dane?
Yes.
Commissioner Shacter?
Yes.
Commissioner Whissing?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. Uh, thank you, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. Design team and Matt and everybody else. Thank you. Um, let's see here. I, I was informed that Gretchen is unable to join us tonight. So our next item, uh, we're not gonna open it, the planning file sixty-six twenty, consideration of various C O text amendments. Uh, but I do think if uh, anybody has a comment towards it, um, we could voice that and staff could take note of that and pass it on to Gretchen and we'll uh, continue it to uh, to December meeting.
Are you gonna open it and continue it?
Yes. We can do that. So we should open planning file sixty-six twenty, consideration of various C O text amendments. Uh, but like I said, Gretchen's not here to present it. So if there's any comments from the commission, um, let's do this. I'm entertaining a motion to continue this item till uh, to December meeting.
Still moved?
Thank you. We have a motion to continue. And a second, anybody wanna offer some comments? Commissioner Shacter, please.
Second, no, not at the
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Uh, Commissioner Zipperly?
Kinda makes sense to me to hold our comments till we have Gretchen on board to discuss them. I had a couple of fine tuned um, items that I noted about this, but I, I'm fine with waiting them as long as we get the opportunity next time to discuss those.
Okay, that works for me. Uh, if I see nobody else, uh, I will call for the question to continue planning file sixty-six twenty.
Commissioner Dane?
Yes.
Commissioner Shacter?
This point, yes.
Commissioner Whissing?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Zipperly?
Yes.
Commissioner Grosskopf?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. Thank you. Uh, we will see that again next month. And we are moving into item C, which is a brainstorming session on housing and affordable housing. And I think Hannah, she supplied us with a report in our packet. And I'm trying to scroll to it. Um, it's not loading fast enough. Here it is. Um, anything you would like to not explain, but present?
Um, thank you and good to see everybody tonight. Um, yeah, it was a very uh, short little staff report based on Housing Commission meeting that we had, um, trying to get some recommendations for forward movement on some possible code changes. Um, so there's a list there of the areas that were recommended for staff to look into and obviously for Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss and weigh in on as well. Um, it might appear like a pretty hefty list and uh, it would take considerable work on staff's part. Um, but we are eager to take your direction and move forward with it as well. So if you guys have any questions on that meeting, um, Sumner and Catherine um, are on Housing Commission, so they can also speak to that meeting if you have um, specific questions as well. And I'm here in a support capacity and uh, just because it's a chance to get to talk to you guys.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, Jen, please.
Um, so i- in addition to what Hannah has um, provided here, I just would like, like to say that there are some things that we um, that it will take a little bit of time to, to, in order for them to come forward. There are um, a few of these areas that are um, that are potential specific zoning changes rather than like kind of, um, so in a specific zone potentially. Um, and so we would like to to have a neighborhood meeting or have some other process in order to get input rather than just going to the um, creating the code. Uh, we, I don't know, um, there are parts of the, the code that require it. But I think we always err on the idea of wanting to have people provide input and, and going to them kind of versus uh, just inviting people to a public hearing. So um, so there will potentially be some code that could come forward without that step in the process, but I think that there are, there are potentially areas where we wanna make sure that we have a kind of a neighborhood meeting.
And I assume y- you're referring to certain parts of town for those kind of things or, or, or more certain zoning, zone districts.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Well, I, I'm the one that kind of called for this and uh, I, I just feel like when, when things are being discussed and things are you know, on everybody's mind, we, we, at least I feel that way. If, if we just sit together and voice whether it fits onto Hannah's report or not, but just voice what we see um, for the future of housing in Glenwood Springs. I, I feel when, when things are being discussed, we should voice it. So that's why I kind of wanted to do this because the, the, it's a hot item. And um, we all have our ideas and, and, and how I kind of envisioned this and we can do raise hands like we, we've been doing. So we're not ending up in a in a Zoom mess. Um, I was thinking everybody could just chime in if, if you hear your fellow commissioners say um, or speak uh, about a certain topic and you wanna add to it, uh, raise your hand, we can add to it. So we kind of stay in the same direction and, and then unfortunately staff, I was hoping that you guys could take notes and assort those comments to where they may belong as in, thank you Hannah. As in Housing Commission, as in com plan, as in zoning changes, wherever you think those comments should, should be and what should we talk about it further? You know, some things won't go anywhere, but some things are definitely worth pursuing and discussing, discussing. Um, so that said, um, anybody wanna go first? Please raise your hand. I know we have two Housing Commission members here on board. Um, I don't know if you guys can even tell us what you guys have been doing, which would also be nice. Um, like I found out at the last joint meeting that you guys have um, pinpointed some property for a possible private public partnership and on all that. I, I had no idea about it. So, um, anyway, Sumner, Catherine?
Catherine, do you want to speak up?
Why don't I go first and then Sumner will fill in all the details?
Thank you.
Um. So maybe I'll start with your question there, Marco, about uh, the project or the, the goal maybe of the Housing Commission to consider with council support and direction, the idea of maybe it's called a pilot or a demonstration or some kind of um, effort using city land to demonstrate commitment toward housing solutions and to illustrate the, the acuteness of this challenge here in town and in our area. Um, two parcels were identified. I think you heard about those. One is um, it, you know, on Eighth Street in Midland. I don't know the names of it exactly. And then the other one was out, um, uh, on Midland like in South Glenwood toward um, uh, toward the Cardiff Glen neighborhood over there, which is another city owned parcel. It was a larger parcel. Um, I think that neither is a hundred percent decided. Um, so both are still kind of in play as ideas and it was vetted from a larger list of potential parcels. And really the idea is, is unvetted in the sense that there's no plan, there's no site plan, there's no thought of what would be on those vertical improvements, but just more of a continued effort to learn. So I think the next step, steps of the Housing Commission was to go through a process of reaching out kind of one by one, each commissioner reaching out to a variety of different stakeholders just to learn. Um, if it was a stakeholder who might be a developer, what was that developer's perspective on how municipalities can um, be supportive to housing projects? If it was an employer, would that employer be at all interested in some kind of project like this? Um, if it was a um, a nonprofit that does housing work or somehow touches housing, would they be interested? Would they have comments or thoughts or guidance? So it was kind of still in the research phase, I would say. Um, I think that list included other uh, even other um, kind of like communities to ours to see what they're doing um, or, or successes that they've had. And so I think that's really the actions to date. Um, and that, that list was just recently, recently created like I'm kind of feeling like I was in a meeting recently about it. Um, so you know, still moving forward, but I guess I wanna emphasize we're nowhere near any kind of it will be this number of units serving this kind of population with this kind of affordability structure or, or not kind of affordability structure. And it will be rental or it will be ownership or it will target this kind of um, group. So it's it's meant to be more of a ground up and exploratory process to help us as a larger group become more educated in housing. Sumner?
Sure. Um, couple things. Um, I'm a little less patient than Catherine. So we're looking for an actionable, actionable item that involves specifically with what Catherine's talking about. We want, I think I'll say we, it might be pejorative, an actionable item that demonstrates Glenwood's willingness to provide some form of housing. And this is a way to explore without without expense of the city other than a partnership where the city provides land and perhaps some degree of fee waivers and or incentives to get a partnership going. So we actually have some kind of housing constructed. Like Catherine said, we don't know what kind yet. We're, are, the phase now is to go out, reach out to all kinds of partners. Um, not request for proposal, but request for information. What questions do we need to ask? Where can we find information to lead us to a specific partnership on one or both of these parcels depending on um, what the city council approves. And we've got the green light so far to pursue this. So um, that's one big thing on our plate. This list that Hannah just gave you um, is a little broader than that, obviously. And, and assuming uh, I'll, I'll make it, the Housing Commission's role is to explore providing more housing, more diverse housing and more affordable housing ways to do it. And these were items that we felt, felt could lead to those goals to push up to P and Z because they have to go through P and Z and staff to come into some kind of code form. And there's a lot of wiggle room there and then push up to council and council has repeatedly said, give us the big picture stuff. So I would hope that we keep pushing stuff up to council um, moderately aggressively. After other people speak, Marco, I have some other things to share as a P and Z commissioner, but this is that's what I have to share from the Housing Commission. And you've got a great group of people working for you on the Housing Commission, myself excepted. Thank you.
Very humble. Thank you. Uh, excellent information though. Thank you very much. I'm just, I'm curious that uh, did you guys talk about, and, and I may, this may be premature, but did you guys talk about possibly um, creating some sort of a housing authority within Glenwood and turning, turning some of these deed restricted or affordable housing units over into stewardship for the city and the city manages those? Um, take them, take them away from, from the actual develop, not away, take them away, but you, you manage it as a city. And then the city actually is in charge of the affordable housing aspect. Have you guys ever heard of anything like that over here?
Yeah, I think part of that will come out of this learning process, Marco. Um, how this thing gets developed and then depending on what it is, who manages it and how. And that would be one step toward that.
Right. Catherine?
Totally agree. I would, I would really vote to not build the regime before you build the kind of the concept. And we have a lot of tools already in this area. We don't need to reinvent them necessarily. Um, but you know, your comment about making sure the stewardship happens is true. So I think those are part of the, the learning. Yep.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Uh, any other questions to the Housing Commission? Or comments or where are we, public, private partnership?
Can I make one comment and maybe to Hannah? And I just saw this and I never asked it and I see it again here, but it says about contacting the Valley Housing Coalition. What is that referring to?
You're, uh, Catherine, you're looking at the, is that from the goal statement? Uh, I believe action three point one from the R E R C document. Um, and I might ask for some help from Jen on this one because I was unable to attend um, the public meeting that these goals came out of. So what Catherine is referring to is the um, action item under goal three, which states, reach out to partners on affordable housing solutions, funding and examples and contact the Valley Housing Coalition. I believe they're referring to the um, stakeholder coalition that was formed when we uh, had the study done. Looks like Jenna's nodding her head. Jen, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that um, K T uh, was
No, I think that um KT uh was also intended to be part of this larger um R E R C group. And she may have been able to attend one, um but um she was transitioning out of that that position. So um we didn't necessarily have all of the the housing folks who we intended to have in those meetings, but I but I do think that there is work that has been done there for that group and that it that there may need to be a next step potentially. Um and so I think that that's what that goal the goal is in service to.
Not opposed to the goal, just want to kind of say out loud that I don't think there's a formal thing called the Valley Housing Coalition. You know, that's bona fide nonprofit that I
You are Catherine, it's not a nonprofit. It's a group that was started as a steering committee for the regional housing study. Um it includes uh municipal um staff and um KT Gazunas from the Garfield County Housing Authority uh was formerly on it. We've been on hiatus for some time. I have attended those meetings. Um but they were moving forward ideas of a regional housing authority. That was kind of their main goal. Um so that's a little bit on hold right now, but you are absolutely correct. Um not as formal as that name might imply.
But I do think that there was when there was a a potential I G A or something that had come to us that that may be kind of even if it wasn't in caps, that that was kind of the name. So I think that's where that comes from.
Okay, great. Commissioner Shaver, please.
Um I wanted to ask the question about the item that mentions annexation policy and and what uh what was the thinking or direction or how would that be applied? And just if someone could speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
I'll take that. And then if Sumner Catherine want to jump in. So this was really pulled from the homework assignment that you guys uh both Housing Commission and Planning and Zoning Commission turned in um and was based on how many um in answers to those goals of what what was thought to be a possible effective policy or something that we should pursue. So annexation policy came up multiple times. Um and the annexation policy is something that's mentioned in our comprehensive plan with quite a few recommendations for what it should include. Um we do have a I guess I'll call it a some loose, some loose guidance on our current annexation policy, but it doesn't give strict outlines of percentage of affordable housing um and real goals for affordable housing in an annexation policy. So that that's what this is listed for to flush out a few more of those aspects and include it in the annexation policy. So that when an annexation comes in um for city council to consider those affordable housing goals um are are considered and in a measurable aspect so that that project can be compared against it. I'll hand it off to either Sumner or Catherine if they have anything to add to that.
And just before we do that, George, I would think that we where we would do this is in an updated comprehensive plan. Um kind of that that's the the time to to do that. Because we're you know, hopefully we're it'll be grant dependent if we are able to do it in twenty twenty one, but you know, it is um staff's goal to to look at that comprehensive plan update.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Zipperly, please.
Um my I had a couple of questions um. One about that annexation policy, like are they usually brought forth by a developer with an intention to do a major development? And then they want to get on city services or could it be like a whole neighborhood? And not a developer going for annexation? Because if it's that way, then I would say well, if they've already got all their houses and such, like say if it was, I don't know if Mitchell Creek, for example, I'm not sure if it is in city limits, but if we were to annex them and they're already kind of built, would that make certain parcels that are now annexed subject to new inclusionary housing requirements? So there there's that. Um my other question was uh how many employers and which employers have actually gone to the effort of providing employee housing? We know about Iron Mountain. I know about the Hot Springs Pool and I think Valley View and the school district, but do we have any other partners uh already? Who have participated and we can sort of show this has been a beneficial partnership?
I have some ideas to respond. Let's see, on the on the partnership of other employers, I think one is the city of Glenwood Springs and I don't, I'll look at Hannah and Jen, but I know at one point there was sort of a an assistance program to help with homeownership and the city put forward some funds to do that. And this is going to be old. So we, you know, like pre O eight even. Um so there was a pool money to support kind of um stabilizing city employees and helping them buy homes within a certain radius of the community. I don't think it was exclusive to Glenwood. So that's one partner I know of. Um another one that does a similar program like that is the um River District. They have a fairly generous um program to supporting their own employees um purchasing homes. Um and it's a step down program where it's kind of a forgivable loan. If you remain an employee for for the long, like a long time, maybe ten years or seven years or something. So those would be two um sort of quasi governmental partners that I know have have participated in the housing realm. And then one last statement on the annexation. You know, right now, as a government, if a developer proposed annexation to us, there's you know, really the any extraction or any sort of um goal that would want to be derived from that agreement to allow the annexation or to accept it is on the table. So it's it's not that there is a limit as the time is, that's the normal process, but I think the idea of having an annexation policy more formalized is the idea of communicating to any um developer. If if there was the idea to to develop like a P U D and have it annexed in, it really sort of sets up what the community would expect um in exchange for that trade.
So Matt, I I know that you're probably leaving here in just a few minutes, but I don't know if you wanted to answer anything related kind of to the services piece of the annexation. There's a kind of a question there. So before we lose Matt, we might ask him that question.
Sounds good.
What specifically do you want me to answer? I'm sorry. I was doing three things at one time.
I don't know if you want to restate your question, Carolyn? Yeah, I I was wondering about how the annexation policy kind of works. I would presume that it would be mostly developers trying to get annex into the city. And my presumption also is that they would do that in order to be connected to our utilities. Um but is I guess how do how do the utilities sort of tie into the annexation? And then is it is it only developers that come wanting annexation or has it ever been you know, just regular citizens? You might know that.
Well, when it comes to utilities, you know, the it's kind of different depending on which utility it is, obviously. Um the electric department, we have a district which goes outside of the city limits. It goes up four mile, it goes a few places. So um if people come in and they want to hook onto the electric, we just make sure we have a load capacity. You know, we look at things like what are you building? Um do you want rapid charging stations on it? Because we might not be able to supply that much power out of that substation, all those other fun things. But there's no annexation clause for electric. They can hook onto it as long as they're in our district. Um they don't have to annex into the city. The same thing with sewer, which is odd because water is completely different. Um you can have sewer for the city of Glenwood Springs and you don't have to annex into the city. You can have water for the city of Glenwood Springs, but you have to sign a pre-annexation agreement. Um sometimes if you're going to hook onto the system and you are a large development, we may say you have to annex into the city. Um but if the the very minimum, you'll have to sign a pre-annexation agreement. So at some point, if we want you to annex, um we can ask you to annex. And if you're outside of the city, um you pay a additional fee. You know, you pay fifty percent more. I can never remember if it's water or sewer. I think it's water. Because you're outside of city limits. So it behooves some people to annex into the city to pay a lesser fee um associated with that utility. Broadband kind of basically sticks within city limits uh at this point. So it's kind of here nor there. I mean, some people, a lot of, we don't have a lot of repercussions for somebody not annexing into the city but hooking onto water. So all of West Glenwood used to be West Glenwood Water District. Um we don't even require people pre-annexation agreements over there because when we took the district over, I don't think we require pre-annexation agreements over there, do we Jen? She's just staring at me. I can't, I don't think we do. Um when we took over the district, it was kind of part of the agreement is we won't charge them additional fees um and pre-annexation, I can't remember one way or the other on that one. So it it depends on where you're at within the city on a lot of these questions, to be honest with you.
I think we did for one of those that recently came through required it or made sure.
I think it's the fifty percent upcharge for the water. I don't, they still have to pre-annex into the city if they want water over there. So it's case by case. We have some control over if they're going to add such a large development that affects how our tanks function or pipe sizes. You know, we'll ask them to upgrade those facilities instead of us having to do it because then the city would be bearing costs for development. So does that answer any of your questions?
Yeah, so that that brings me to if if um a property is being developed sort of just outside city limits, they could basically get all of the city services and utilities without annexation. They just might wind up paying a little more. Which would be a loophole to get them out of the affordable housing incentive. So the we're not going to make them ever annex. I guess we can't do that, right?
Well, I think, I mean, I think we have um if we have a, you know, an enclave or a a piece that is almost an enclave. I mean, I think the the county does refer it to us if it's trying to develop in the county. Um and then we sort of make that determination. So the one that I was just referencing with Matt was an individual lot where it was, do we you know, do we want this to annex or not based on what they're doing? But um and it is tied to those those that service question. But I I think that those are the kinds of things that, I mean, all of those kinds of conversations should probably, if there are changes in the thinking, should be handled with that larger comprehensive plan, big global look. So I think, you know, that's maybe a conversation for a a whole, a whole seminar. We'll bring Carl.
One thing, I recently worked on agreement.
Or Hannah or Matt while you're still here, which is an old is an old question. Um do we know, we know there are benefits to adding units, but there's also a cost. Do we have in the planning world? Um depending on what we're adding, whether it be a home or multifamily or whatever, do we know what the the count, we can calculate the cost to the city in terms of all kinds of things for adding units or um population.
Sumner, I'm going to put your your question on hold. Anna was trying to say something. So I'm I'm going to write it down while Anna says what she's going to. We'll come right back to it.
Oh, it's okay. Sorry. Thanks Hannah. I I was just going to say that in our pre-annexation agreement, I recently worked on one that it says that if we provide them with services and then we decide that we want them to annex and that they don't, we have the right to initiate proceedings on their behalf. Um I I haven't tried to enforce it. I don't know how how it works, you know, how if there's defenses to it, but we do have that right in the agreement to initiate the action, charge them for it um and force them to annex as a condition of the pre-annex pre-annex.
I I believe you're correct and that's how the enclaves work also. We can force them to annex anytime we want to with the pre-annexation agreements. Depending on which one you read, I've read some that are different from past days. We can actually just say, hey, we do want you to annex into the city. The question is, is what's the benefit to the city to have certain people annex into it? Since we don't get property taxes and those kinds of fun things, why for somebody? Um developers, I guarantee you and Hannah and Jen know this just as well as I do, of whatever they want to do, they're looking at the county and they're looking at city regulations, which one behooves them the most? You know, and a lot of times it's the county, they're a little easier to get through than we are. And then a year later, they can come back and say, well, we want to annex in. You know, so there's always the games that get played with those kinds of conversations, but I guarantee the developers look as it makes sense for them financially or development wise, code wise, who's who they're going to regulate um to stay in the stay in the county or or be part of the city.
Well, then maybe we annex just to get more weed stores.
That was funny.
A- a- anyway, just real quick, what and it probably never happens, but when you force somebody to annex, can you then ask them to provide affordable housing as well if there's
A forcible annexation is my understanding.
I I'm sorry.
In condition of forcible annexation.
You cannot.
I mean, Anna, tell me if I'm wrong, but I
No, I don't think so, but I wonder if you can negotiate as part of the annexation agreement, like
I remember that an annexation used to be a wishlist for us. Usually you want to, you want a walking path, you want this, you want that. Usually it was, but I don't know if, you know, and and I'm talking about obviously a new development here. Can you ask them to build affordable housing if they? Okay, can we ask them if we force them or can we ask them if they come voluntarily? Is there a difference?
I just don't think we would force that kind of development to be annexed. I was talking about like a specific situation, like maybe an enclave where they're getting some services subject to a pre-annexation agreement and for whatever reason, I I don't know that we would do that, but
I I just recall a a lot on Midland that came forward with I forget the number of units on it and they want it to be annexed because the it's not, it's in the county. From what I remember, and could we have asked them to, hey, if you want to be annexed, that's great, we'll take you, but we need affordable housing out of this.
We could have. I don't see why.
That's on the table. You can do that.
Right, because we don't have, because the city doesn't have an obligation to allow the annexation. So it's it's like an incentive, like the other kinds of incentives that are on Hannah's list, I think.
Right. Okay, cool. Um Hannah, you were going to answer a question.
Well, I can't answer it, so I was going to punt it to either Matt or Jen.
Excellent.
Matt, do you have any idea on Sumner's question about the costs that adding a housing unit to our systems, like do we have an actual equation for or a number attached per housing unit of what that, what we incur?
No, but it's something that we should put together, to be honest with you, because it's additional um cost for road maintenance because it's additional traffic, it's additional load on water wastewater uh facilities, it's additional load on electric. Are the loads insignificant? They they kind of are, but they add up. Um especially if it's a large development, if it's just a house. It's really not a huge deal. Most likely the infrastructure is already there and we're already maintaining it anyhow. They're adding a service on to it. But if it's three hundred units uh that are coming in and want to develop, yes, there is a significant cost associated with that. Um and we recoup some of that with system improvement fees. Um and those kinds of things, but we don't have a roadway improvement fee. Um it's just something we don't have at this point. We had for a while and I think it got shot down after like a year or two uh back in like oh eight, oh nine, something to that effect. So um that is something that Sumner brought up and is a good thing to bring up and is something that we probably should reconsider in the future. Because we do, like I said, have system improvement fees for certain things. We don't have system improvement fees for electric. We do for water wastewater. Um we are building a two and a half million dollar substation in West Glenwood Springs because of development in West Glenwood Springs, which is raft of bus barns, Glenwood Meadows, rapid charging stations. Everything that goes on over there means that we have to spread our load out more. And we've never charged a system improvement fee for um electric. We basically just cover those capital costs through uh electric fees themselves. So it's a good question to bring up. Um I don't think it's ever been detailed out every single, if you add one bedroom unit, what is the cost to the city uh into the system themselves. It's probably, like I said, pretty insignificant, but when you start multiplying it across the whole grid, then it becomes more more of a cost for sure.
But when you create a system improvement fee, there has to be a rational nexus to the increase in in the development. So or you increase of the use. So that is how in Matt's right, we don't have a system improvement fee for everything, but there is a rational nexus that you have to have.
Correct.
So just
Part of the way there.
Right, when we do an annexation and we're asking for affordable housing and they say, well, yeah, but we want to sign up for your uh deed restricted program here, um but we want the fees gone. That's kind of counterproductive, isn't it? Because you're not getting the money you need to pay for all the infrastructure improvements. But we want the affordable housing. So how do we prevent that?
It's a good question.
Am I am I completely off base or I think that's right?
And it's an interesting question because you're basically having an enterprise fund fund something that may be a overall benefit for all of the city. I don't, I don't know. It's an interesting thing how a a system improvement fees are deducted based on developments that are adding to the system that are causing drags on the system, but the system that causing the drags on is the one that's paying for it. Which in theory, you make it up with the volumetric use by the people paying their bills and all those other fun things.
Over years, over years to come.
Many years, many years. But you gotta benefit them somehow. That's the fee that they can do. Go ahead, Summer.
I I think I'm just like you said, it's work and I don't know if the Colorado Municipal Municipal League has a template, but as a member of the planning and zoning, it would, I think it would help to have some rough metric of, like I said, what are we adding in costs? And yes, one small house or one ADU, we'd have a metric, but it's probably insignificant. And I would imagine part of the rational nexus, I don't know, Jen, we, it's not just hard service. I don't know where you factor in fire, police, um, rescue. I mean, there's so many things. Then I'm just wondering, maybe the municipal league or other areas have some kind of algorithm that we could plug in because I have no, we have no clue. We've never, you've never heard.
We do have a system improvement fee for fire. Um, we do have a system improvement or, you know, an impact fee um, for for, it's just not for everything, but we do have one for fire. Um, so that mean if we could, we could show you kind of the ones that we do have. Um, and then maybe kind of detail the ones that we don't have, but I think the idea with the rational nexus is that it, you know, and maybe CML does have a tool, but it's kind of, you know, based on what is your methodology and your costs, your capital improvements that you have planned. You know, so it's very specific to a a place too. And and maybe they have a tool to get there, but um, you know, I think we, the last time we did the system improve, the the EQR kind of table, um, we had, you know, consultants who helped us do that because it takes, it's, there's often a methodology to get there. You know, that it's based on service delivery and the capital improvements and those sorts of things.
There are, there are some metrics out there that I could probably snag and we can have just for discussion sake, if nothing else. Um, and I could shoot them off to Hannah. CML, I believe, has them and there's a few other entities out there uh, that could probably steal some from. Once again, they won't be perfect, but if you want a beginning point for a conversation, then it would probably get you to that.
I think it might be a nice piece of the puzzle to figure all this out, but George had his hand up for a while. Commissioner Shaver, please.
Well, um, this isn't what I put my hand up for, but in this discussion of when you weigh fees, then you put burden on the system that is not compensated. It it transfers that over to other people that are using the systems. But what I wanted to ask Matt before, if he was leaving, was um, not thinking about um, large developments, but just kind of one-off developments, developments around the city that wouldn't generate um infrastructure impacts that that would affect infrastructure, uh, but wouldn't um, be to the level that it would um, require um, the developer to, you know, to to provide infrastructure. Um, are there areas in the city that are under underserved, so to speak, or are areas of the city that can take a lot of development? How uh, just generally across the board in in the utility world, are there soft spots or not?
Um, it's an interesting question. Um, we're actually gonna invest some money this year and next year to finish up our complete water model um, associated with the city. And I have been putting in uh, letters of um, I just escaping me at this point. Service letters, we'll say we will serve, can it will serve letters, sorry. But uh, when we provide can it will serve letters, I've been making them very long. They used to be about two paragraphs. Um, now they say all kinds of fun things like, uh, you know, we're working on the system and if you're large enough development, we may actually ask you to do system improvements, not just pay system improvement fees. Um, so yes, I guess that's why we're building a substation. We see that there's a system deficiency in West Glenwood Springs on the south side of the river, um, with all the development that's happening out there. And I, you know, when Rafta says they're not gonna build a whole bunch of charging stations for electric buses, they will. Um, so you know, we're preparing for the worst and making sure our grid is extremely resilient. When it comes to water and sewer, you know, West Glenwood Water Sanitation District, I can't speak for them. Uh, at some point, they will be maxed out. Um, and they'll have to ask for forgiveness or uh, expand their plant with, if there's a lot of development over in West Glenwood and that plant sits in a tiny, tiny spot. Um, as for us, we have good water capacity. We have a lot of tank capacity. Um, we are fixing lines, but that doesn't mean we're upsizing lines. We have good capacity within our water lines. We have good capacity within our sewer lines. So when it comes to overall city, I'd say we're pretty good. Um, we're gonna do some water plant upgrades this year, which will make us even better. We'll be able to process more water uh, than we ever have been able to do. Um, and as South Midland and these other projects come on and they do upsize, some of those trunk lines are maybe a little undersized. Um, that's the kind of the one I can think of is from four mile back to the water plant, that water line's a little undersized. Um, but we're working on other ways to get around that, uh, make it so that can last for quite a long time. So I can't say there's any real significant soft spots uh, that I would point at. Um, the only one would be electric and we're dealing with that one right now. We we have a lot of waters. As long as the water comes out of the hill, we have a lot of water. If it doesn't come out of the hill, that's when it becomes more problematic.
It's good to know. I I would think all this um could be all part of the discussion when when people say we're full, we have reached our density. Um, I I think it's good to know what we can handle, what can we upgrade, what's capacity? The roads, of course, is another one. Um, I think we need to somehow figure out what the roads can handle. Maybe we know that already. But I think that's all part of the puzzle of of um, density bonuses and all that kind of stuff, so. Uh, anyway, uh, anybody else?
I have people, not to cut you, sip, I'm sorry, but I had people call me all the time that ask water and electric questions because they don't, they're non-development people. And when they learn out, learn that we have thirteen million gallons of water rights a day, and we only use five.
Wow.
Um, and when they tell them that we're building substations to meet capacity, that that kind of falls off their list for uh, not non-development, they start shooting at other things, traffic. That is a very easy one to have.
That's an easy target. I agree. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Commissioner Shack.
Anybody else want to speak up before I do a little litany? Well, one, one thing I'd raise and it, I wrestle with it as a commissioner on the housing and Jen kind of referred to it and the RERC thing, I think led to it is looking at the comp plan because it always comes up in our variance stuff and our decisions and and related to what you just said, Marco, I wonder what the physical capacity of Glenwood is because we're constrained and and I worry for the future that our neighboring communities have far more advantages than we do in terms of growth and retail and expansion industrial. So what is our capacity? But just as important, I wrestle with, you know, do we know what our current nine thousand, the nine thousand people we represent? What, what is the vision for Glenwood? What, right now, what are the people who live here want for the next ten, twenty, thirty, forty years? In other words, we, we fall back on what is small town character, which to me al- almost becomes a bit of an anomaly with what we've been seeing in terms of traffic and growth. So I'm wondering if it's not time to somehow reach out to the community, which I know is very difficult and very time consuming. But to raise that question, what, what is small town? Do you, do you want to be a growing community? How do you want that growth to go? We, we're making some assumptions that I don't think have been totally tested. And for a path going forward, I wrestle with that, even though a handful of us may have similar desires. I'm not sure there's a clear-cut path in the community that maybe we need to assess at some point in the next year or two to be able to make some of these decisions about annexation, about projects, about code changes, about density, about density bonuses. Um, that I'm kind of feeling like I'm working in a little bit of a void. Um, that's one thing. Um, now I know one way we could push it. I I go, we look at the old comp plan and they, they keep referring to these areas of study that we keep studying, but haven't done anything. The airport, the south corridor along by the graveyard, the confluence. We, we've spent a lot of money and haven't really come up with an action plan yet. I believe if somebody had the political will, we've come close. Um, an airport, an airport referendum um, based on maybe what we've already paid for in consulting, the three scenarios or something else, could very well force that issue for the um, near and distant future as to what do you want in Glenwood in the way of growth, housing, affordable housing or not. That was just a thought. Um, I'm skipping around a little bit, but that's a big one for me. What, what, what is the goal? What is the vision? Um, I think uh, planning and zoning maybe um, should engage or have some kind of uh, have the DDA available to workshop. I know it's come up before. I know they're looking at Sixth Street and there was pretty strong consensus in the community, in the commissions, not to let an A and B type develop um, uh, building happen downtown again. And I'm not sure um, what the DDA is doing, but we should probably be party to a discussion about something like that. Um, what else?
Hey, Summer, before you go on your list, is there anybody that wants to just discuss what Summer said so far? If before, oh, Jen, please.
So I I think that that's why I've been um, pushing for the comprehensive plan because all of these kinds of things are feeding into um, what that comprehensive plan is and that, you know, it it at the at its heart, I think it it tries to answer that question, who are we and what do we want to be? And sets forth like the those goals that are related to that. Um, and I think, you know, uh, about ten years is what they say is the the lifespan of a comprehensive plan and we're there. And so I think that's probably why is because we start to ask ourselves these questions, are we headed in the right direction? And um, a- and so I think I think that I I was hearing you say that before you're even saying it tonight, is I guess what I'm trying to say.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, let's, hang on, Summer, just a second. Let's go. Commissioner Zippoli here for a second.
I wanted to touch on what Sumner was saying there about uh, finding out what the community wants, like maybe something like the move study that Rafta just did with kind of explanations and they walk you through the questionnaire. You can, you maybe give them some scenarios because I could foresee that if we didn't actually outline a few choices they could pick, it might be really difficult to um, to come up with some results. But as part of that study, I think it would be useful to not just limit it to the citizens of Glenwood Springs. Um, as we do make an effort to build some housing here, we're gonna be probably attracting people from up valley, uh, looking for a nice, more mellow community. We're probably gonna be attracting people from uh, you know, out to the west, maybe even gypsum, looking to move um, to a place with stability and where they also can live and their kids can go to school. So I was kind of thinking, how would we involve a slightly larger regional community in an assessment like that? And yes, I realize that it will be um, a difficult project.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaver.
So um, I I get from Jen that every time she has an opportunity to promote the uh, the comp plan, she's gonna do that, and that's well taken. Um, Jen, do you have thoughts um, as it relates to Sumner about how how we get direction from the community or is is I assume that's what we want to do when we formulate the uh, the comp plan, the new comp plan? Do you have some thoughts about that?
So I was thinking that one thing that we might want to do is, um, and Marco and I've talked about this a little bit, is find some time to go through the comprehensive plan and see what you guys think is like, you know, circle, this is still valid, like we, you know, um, but we still have to test that, but you know, X like, no, you know, there are some information kind of in the the bypass thinking, you know, is that like the X or not? I mean, I I think um, so there's, those are some things that I think that this group might want to do in terms of looking back at that document. And then we would hire a consultant team, you know, we're gonna go for a grant. Um, I think the deadline is at the very beginning of February and then we'll kind of know more. Um, you know, I know that we wish we had unlimited resources and it just, you know, this year has been impactful to our um, revenues and and we see that that can potentially happen um, into twenty twenty-one, depending on what happens with coronavirus. So um, in that's why we're gonna go for a grant for the process, but I think we should still as a group go through what is in that that document, what do we think is relevant or not? Um, and then that can kind of set the stage for when we write that RFP or Q or whatever uh, process that we're doing for that um, procurement piece for consultants who will help us do the um, the outreach and those sorts of things, because that is a really big component um, of a comprehensive plan in my mind. And um, so I I think, and and I, somebody's mentioned and it might have been Sumner, I'm not, or maybe it was Georgia, I'm sorry. Um, talked about the the DDA has been working through their um, plan of development, which is a requirement, statutory requirement, and theirs is um, very old and and dated. And so they're working through that process. They will come back to you um, as part of the required, like we did with Urban Renewal Authority. There'll be a presentation before Planning Commission. And so you'll get to see kind of where they're going. Um, it's not so specific to the question about A and B. Um, and you know, there is a couple of different ways to get to those changes. That's something that could be something that is a code amendment, that is just a a process that, a regular process, or maybe it's part of a larger conversation about who are we and what do we want to be and what is small town character and all those sorts of things. So um, I'm not, I'm not trying to use that as a crutch, but I just think that there are lots of questions that we're having around the edges about annexation, about um, infill, about character choices. And so the more of those things come up, the more I think that we should have a larger, bigger conversation.
Is uh, speaking of the DDA, is there a historical preservation component to what they're doing in terms of trying to preserve things or or just different design criteria?
They, um, so the design criteria is in our code. Um, and but I I think that Laura did go to the Historic Preservation Commission um, to have some high-level conversations. And I do think when the DDA gets to kind of a more granular level, which is um, like a work plan level, they will certainly be going out to other um, entities like the Historic Preservation Commission to have some of those conversations. Um, to make sure that, and we work, I mean, we work in tandem. I mean, I talk to Laura Kirk probably three times a day, it seems like. Um, so I I definitely, and and Gretchen does as well. So I mean, I I definitely think that they, they will be involved. I don't know that it's like a a section about historic preservation. Um, I haven't reread kind of their latest draft of where they got to. I don't know if that's helpful.
Uh, thank you. Commissioner Grosscut.
Thanks. And I, I guess I just want to kind of chime in on the big conversation, Jen, that you're offering about the need and you know, it is the kitchen sink, the comprehensive plan, and we need to look at it. I hear you. Um, but the conversation today, tonight, was to be about housing and discussing that with planning and zoning. And we paid for some kind of, you know, as a regional study worth a hundred and you know, I don't know, but a hundred and twenty-five thousand, many, many groups participated. It was a great regional effort with direct community survey. Um, I mean, I haven't seen something like that in elsewhere where that much um, direct participation and survey was done from residents, not only Glenwood, but up and down, including. from residents, not only Glenwood, but up and down, including gypsum, including Newcastle. And I, I don't remember exactly where it stopped, if it was there or silt. So we just want to more say, we have this body of evidence and that was definitely a needs analysis, but it did get direct feedback of, of sort of a pulse of how people feel and need and, and the challenges that they have. So I don't want to I just want to remind that we have that body of evidence that was a year-long pretty expensive survey to gather. Um, and it is a good platform. So, thank you.
Uh, thank you Catherine. Um, before we move on, I just want to circle back to the uh, uh, bank um, downtown and, and I, I, I know we didn't have, I, I, at least it seemed like we didn't have the tools in place, but I feel we missed an opportunity there for um, asking them or in general, anybody that wants to do an infill or a redevelopment in the, on Grand Avenue at a downtown court at the at the uh, district to add housing. Why, why, why don't we have anything there where we can say, yeah, we love you, your place looks great. Um, underground parking and housing on top. That's what we require. What do we need to, is this a zoning thing? Is this a design standard thing? Is this? Or does it start on top with the comprehensive plan? But I feel like, I feel like it was a missed opportunity. To to get housing out of it, to get office space out of it, to get a different project out of it. That would have maybe served Glenwood a little better in the, in the long run. So I just want to throw that out there. Sumner mentioned it. Um, and I just wanted to double up. Um, because I, I, looking at the list, maybe it goes somewhere in there, but I, I do feel like we should have something in place. If that happens again, we can say we, we love for you to show up and do this, but here's what we're really looking for.
Kicking around some ideas about that, that conversation. Like I say, there's like the two different paths. Um, could it be part of a larger conversation? I certainly think it can and should be, but is there a, a more granular level that's a code change? Um, so Anna and I have been kicking it around. Um, I don't know, Anna, if we've, you know, we're not re- maybe ready for prime time.
No.
No. She says no.
Uh, no, Carl said he had some ideas that he wanted to share as well, but I mean, it's a good idea.
Well, I just don't want to, I just don't want to miss it because I, I do believe with older buildings that are not historically preserved, i- in the future, they may go away and new ones will come, but why can't we get something out of it that we actually need? When they do show up. So I don't know, just my opinion to that. So thank you Summer for bringing that up. And I also see that Summer raised his hand. Please, Summer.
Well, I had a couple more quick things. Um, we talked about, um, one thing that the Housing Commission has talked about that didn't come up on this prime list because this is um, zoning stuff, but we have had significant conversation about looking and retaining our already affordable housing, whether they be in our trailer parks or match booth, I understand. I think Catherine said it's coming up for renewal. So we have existing housing stock that we probably, at least, maybe the staff has looked at, but I don't know that the commissions have looked at saying, hey, how do we preserve these so they don't go away? And I would also encourage us um, in the near future to kick up to planning and to commission to engaging Thistle as soon as possible, which I understand doesn't cost anything from what I was led to believe to help us research um, and contact mobile home park owners for future acquisition or preservation. So that was one other thing that I don't think we've communicated to P and Z. Um, one other thing, um, we also discussed um, is, and it's premature, but it'll be in the, it'll be in the code is taking a look at alternative building some types, whether it be, whether you call them container homes or, or um, mini homes or whatever. Um, start looking at that depending on the appropriate sites. That was another thing we've discussed. And one other thing I'm concerned about, and I, I don't know who's applied if any for all, our alternates, all, alternates. But I think we are, we need to aggressively recruit, not passively wait for uh, Latino representation on these boards. And I think that might have exhausted my list for tonight. Thank you.
Hey, uh, Sumner, um, on the uh, trailer parks and already affordable housing, would you think that's an opportunity for the city to get into um, some affordable housing inventory?
Well, the answer, the answer Marco is I believe so. I mean, right now it'd be to acquire the existing mobile home parks, I think would be extremely expensive.
Right.
Um, but, but like, even if you, if ultimately we have a housing authority or not, my, my vision was, and this is what Thistle does, is to be proactive. Don't wait till somebody sells them and they get redeveloped into something. Start now, talking, uh, setting up a dialogue with the owners. Um, looking at ways to transition in the future, whether it be rights of first refusal or other mechanisms that may ultimately end up in the city housing stock or the ultimate goal would be perhaps to convert them to co-op properties. So those people living there actually own the properties themselves. So it's a long process, but
Right.
I, I wa- starting early would be better than waiting till it's too late.
Right. It'd be, it'd be rather pricey, but I think it'd be a great approach to uh, maybe get some existing uh, housing, obtainable, affordable, however you want to call it, but um, employee housing um, into city stewardship. I think that's a, that's a great plan. Um, anyway, anybody else? Commissioner Zipperly.
Um, in looking at the list that Hannah distributed, I see a couple kind of low hanging fruit items. Maybe that's because I'm pretty in favor of them uh, adjusting the number of ADUs allowed on a single lot and um, density review for allowing a duplex or a triplex in the low density zones. Now, these are probably actions we can take a little more directly as P and Z, maybe with a little less back and forth with other commissions and things. Um, should we maybe try and prioritize making code changes to those things? Or do we have big qualms with that? I mean, personally, I live downtown, that I have a rental apartment and I would love to build a garage and have an ADU, but as of now, I'm not allowed that extra unit. I think there's a lot of people in the same boat. So that could be pretty low hanging fruit, whether or not we're offering them, you know, cash incentives or fee waivers. Um, I, I realize this might be the start of another large conversation, but you know, do we have it now? Do we move this one on? Or do we try and just tackle some code language?
Um, cor- correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but Jen, you, and Hannah, I think both of you said that whatever's on this list and whatever we're adding to the list tonight, I assume it's going, some of it's going to get added. We will see at some point, right, to discuss.
Yes. And I was just going to say, sorry Hannah, I was just going to say that those are, if you, that specifically says in low density zones, that's the kind of thing that I think we're going to want to have a neighborhood meeting on, um, to at least take some, some public input because I think um, you know, we want to have that robust conversation because I don't think that we want to make a change that and so, you know, maybe, maybe because it's a wide sweeping zone, we wouldn't have to do that, but I think it's the right thing to do. Um, is to go in to talk to people and say like, how do you feel about some of these sorts of things? So
It'll be essential, of course, yeah. Go on Hannah.
Yeah, exactly what Jen was saying and what she mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. There is some low hanging fruit in this list. A lot of it is going to be the high hanging fruit, but it'll just take a little bit longer for us to go through due process and make sure that the community has a voice because these are um, things that impact the entire community and impact, could impact every neighborhood across the board. So we do need to make sure that we allow that process to happen, but the um, the number of ADUs allowed on a single lot, um, our voluntary deed restricted program updates, and I believe tho- those are ones that, that staff's pretty comfortable with, um, because they don't directly impact the, let's say, the character of a neighborhood on a wi- widespread scale and, and we can possibly bring that back to you. Um, I think I did include kind of a December-January timeline, so the, the lower hanging fruit that's not going to take as much process or that we want to have the community um, involved in a longer period of time. We might be able to bring that back in front of you guys in December.
That, that sounds good. And, and, and I, I, I mean, I didn't, I didn't want to put any additional, no pressure whatsoever. It's, I, I know you guys are busy, I get that. And especially if we're jumping on this uh, um, can't even say a comprehensive plan. If you're approaching that with, with money in February, at least you're trying to get money, fantastic. So I just wanted to kind of add to that list, if that's okay. And at, at your professional leisure, which is not a thing that exists, but just bring it to us when it's ready. I, I'd love to see it. We'd love to see it. I think we're all, we're all ready to, to do something instead of just, you know, left, right, left, right. What can we do? Um, Commissioner Shaver.
Oh, when we had these previous conversations and we had the um, transportation people involved, it made me think that and question whether um, there could be incentives to development near uh, transportation, existing transportation. And i- if that could be accomplished with a, uh, some kind of overlay zoning as an encouragement, a positive overlay, giving consideration to areas of the, of the town that have that infrastructure in place. Uh, I just wanted to throw that out as a thought and see, see if anybody has any thoughts about that.
So when you say transportation, you, you mean mass transit?
Yeah, mass transit, you know, bus service and, or, you know, future if we're doing you know, either the large buses are going to smaller buses or um, areas that have uh, that infrastructure available for people to use.
Direct access to bike paths right next door, things like that too?
Yeah, any, anything like that.
Okay.
If, if those areas could be identified in the town and uh, you know, does that make any sense to anybody? You know, to me, it seemed like a way to try to accomplish two things, get, get development for employees or lower income or whatever you want to call it. Um, but also have it be in places where uh, people don't have to depend on vehicles, private vehicles.
Good point, George. Hey Catherine, I got a quick question. You mentioned the uh, oh, what did you call it? The, wh- where the uh, oh, the question was done, what housing is needed? Is that what you mentioned?
The regional county study.
The study?
Yeah, so that was a, a regional housing study. Um, Hannah has the full document and all of the the needs that were produced from that, but it was from uh, all the way from Pittkin County, all through across the valley over to gypsum and then Hannah over to Silt or Newcastle. They surveyed thirty thousand people or, you know, it was enormous. That's maybe too big, but it was a lot of direct survey to get information on needs.
And, and that included uh, cities and towns as well, not just the county areas, unincorporated.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do, because I'm, I'm thinking the city being one of the larger employers in, in the area here, do we even know where, for instance, city employees want to live in? What are they looking for?
Yeah, maybe Hannah, the, the thing that's kind of needed is a, is a little overview of that. I don't, I mean, you were so involved, but did it translate down into groups like this?
And how old is it? And you, I'm just thinking, you know, annexations with apartments, does that make sense? Annexations with condos, is that what we need? What, what, what do we really need? Housing type wise.
Um, I'm, I'm thinking back. Uh, the study was completed in early twenty nineteen, so it's got data um, from twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. And as Catherine mentioned this, they surveyed residents and then they also had a large survey for businesses. Um, and I'd have to go back. You, you, I do have the document. Um, if you guys haven't had a chance to look at it and peruse, it really is informative. Um, specifically the survey, I can't remember if it, if it drills down into you know, what number of bedrooms do you want, but it definitely got to where do you want to live versus where do you live? Uh, how far do you commute? Um, a lot of really important questions that, that lead into our housing discussion for the regional area. So I could definitely-
That help with us with just the city of Glenwood too?
What's that?
Co- couldn't that help with our decision-making too? Um, i- if, if, if we keep approving apartments and nobody really wants to live in them, does that make any sense? I, I understand that we can't put single-family homes with garages and, and yards everywhere because we're out of room, but you know, maybe another piece to the puzzle.
I would definitely have to go back to see if there were questions uh, specifically pertaining to housing unit size or type specifically. There might have been, but I can't recall right off the top of my head.
Just curious.
And it could, it, you're definitely right. It, if it's there, it definitely could inform and um, I believe the responses were broken out by um, by geographic area, so we could drill that down further.
Okay. I think that'd be interesting. I know you, I know you're really good with tables and stuff. Really good. I seen one or two. I'm like, this is good. So anyway, um, any other, any other points anybody wants to make? No? Okay, well, I think it was informative. I think we got some stuff in the open. Um, I think there's some, some other items we can discuss. And of course, uh, Sumner, what is small town character is one of the, I think, one of the first questions at some point we should discuss um, on a, on a P and Z level. Um, I think it makes complete sense, but um, if I don't see any more comments or questions, then we'll uh, close this for tonight. Thank you everybody um, for jumping in. Um, Commissioner comments for tonight? We'll start with Commissioner Zipperly, please.
Thanks. Um, I was so refreshed to see that nice looking electric building and it was well thought out and nicely landscaped. Um, you know, we're not quite, I guess we are quite done with that one now. So um, that was a relief after seeing like these just kind of ugly garages that um, do concern me a little on the outskirts of our town. So that was reassuring and um, yes, I, this is a really large housing project. I uh, I think it'd be really beneficial to see that regional study. And I hope we can reconvene and um, pinpoint some more solutions soon.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaver.
I have no further comments. Thank you. Wish everybody well.
Thank you, George. Commissioner Grosscut.
Nope. Thanks for the discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you Catherine. And Commissioner Wissing?
Nothing from me either. Thanks guys.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Shaktin?
Um, just a warning that, that regional housing study is a hundred and sixty-five pages long. Um, and I hope everybody has a good COVID-adjusted Thanksgiving. Stay safe. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Sumner. Uh, nothing from me either. Just thank you staff for letting us um, talk about this stuff. And let's keep the conversation going. Um, if uh, anybody has anything to contribute to this, either send an email or we'll talk about it in the next meeting. Uh, we can always add it in, in Commissioner, uh, Commissioner comments. Uh, I think it's important that we keep it hot and keep it going. So thank you very much. Uh, Jen, any updates for us?
Um, I don't think I have any updates um, other than the South Midland project. I don't know if um, if any of you were able to attend the, the meeting, but it is um, online. Um, it's on Facebook. I, and maybe on YouTube. Um, it's on Facebook in English and Spanish. So if you didn't have an opportunity, you can um, have an opportunity to engage with that. And um, so that project will obviously have a, a big impact on our community um, in a very good way when it, it's all done. Uh, but in a um, in a construction way that we're all familiar with. Um, in the relative short term, it's an eighteen month project. In the relative short term, it's an 18 month project. So I would, if you have folks who are asking questions, there's a hotline and we'll have information on our website about it. So if if people are asking questions, there's a place to send folks. And I think maybe Hannah can tell me if I'm wrong, but I think it's cog.us/southmidland is the the URL. And I think that's it. Happy, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you. Any, just curious, any, any applications, any alternate applications come in?
We've had two, and I haven't had an opportunity to to check back in and see if we've had any others. City Council will want to schedule that, those interviews. So I'm not certain when they will get that on their their schedule. I need to connect with Catherine about it. For other boards and commissions, we're kind of moving to a model where the the interview will happen in the board and commission meeting time. So if there was an open housing commission seat, for instance, that that would happen in the housing commission time. So that it's easier to schedule, but I it's different for planning commission. We don't have a council liaison. And so
Is there a reason for that?
I think we used to, and then I think there was a decision from city council that because they're so often not able to attend because it's the business of planning commission that that they have lots of boards and commissions. And so so I would anticipate that the whole city council will have that interview at some point.
Okay.
For the for the open seats.
But we did have a little, some response. Okay, that's great. That's better than none. I I like that because you know me, the more minds, the better. Somebody thinks of something, somebody, I didn't, you know, I don't think of much. So it's all good. But anyway, thank you, staff. Thank you, commissioners. Stay happy, stay healthy and enjoy your turkey. This meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.